Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session for the Bladensburg Town Council. Today is Monday, September 14th. We appreciate everyone joining by watching us from home, given that our town hall facilities are still closed to the public, out of safety for our residents and our staff, given that we're still in the COVID-19 pandemic. At this time, we'll call tonight's meeting to order. And if I may, I just want to ask for a moment of silence if we could. As you all know, last Friday, our nation observed the 19th anniversary of September 11th, and I think it's worthy that we just take a moment of silence to reflect on the lives that were lost, as well as the first responders who did an amazing job helping all of the victims and who are still dealing with the loss of their loved ones as well. So if we could just have a pause for a moment of silence. Thank you so much. At this time, the item on the agenda we'll turn our attention to is the approval of work session minutes. We've been asked to table the June minutes to October, but would like to ask for a motion to approve the July work session minutes.
Aye, so moved.
Moved by Councilmember Rout. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. At this time, we are fortunate to have Mr. Sam White with us from the Prince George's County Planning Department. And at this time, he will come and give the council a presentation on the Annapolis Road feasibility study, and also give us an update on how the project is going. So, welcome, Mr. White.
Greetings, councilmembers, Mayor James. My name is Samuel again. My name is Samuel White. I'm a senior planner with the Personnel Office of County Planning Department, Community Planning Division. I am also the project manager for the market feasibility and economic analysis study for the town of Bladensburg. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief update of where we are with the project. As you know, the town of Bladensburg received funding from our Planning Assistance to Municipalities Program to conduct a study that will inform the revitalization efforts to implement the Bladensburg Town Center Character Area Recommendation for the 20 to 2009 Portstown Sector Plan, which recommends mixed-use development. The study area consists of 17 acres, and it also includes commercial and industrial land uses along the Annapolis Road corridor from the bridge from Kennewith Avenue all the way up to 51st Street. Are you familiar with that area? And I also gave everybody a map of where we are. To date, in June, the consultant...
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I got this mask on. Sorry about the mask. I can put this right here. The consultant that received the study, perceived, I mean, had a notice to proceed in June of, I think it was June 19th. Oh, thank you. Oh, that's better. I feel like I'm like... Okay. Our consulting firm received a notice to proceed to start the study in June. In July, the consultant conducted interviews to gather background information on the project. In August, we did a walking tour of the study area. We also did a walking tour of the Bladensburg waterfront and also the Boswick House. Even though the Boswick House, which is historic house, and the Bladensburg waterfront is not included in the study, it still went into form the economic analysis part of the study. Next steps will be, oh, also during, after the tour, well, I should say during the tour, the town representative gave us the vision of this study and what they want to see in the area. That was given to the planning department and also to the consultant. And it's a workshop tentatively scheduled for December to present preliminary findings to key stakeholders. And right now, that's where we are as far as the study is concerned. And you have to excuse me, I'm trying to get used to talking with this mic. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those questions. Oh, and it's also, the study should be completed in the summer of 2021, tentatively. 2021.
Are there any questions from the council, from Mr. White? So I just want to make sure, so as you said, following the walking tour, now you all go back and start compiling information.
Exactly.
And then we will get an update from you in December.
Right.
And then following that, the study will actually be complete next summer?
Yes.
Okay.
And for the workshop that we're going to hold in December, it's going to be a selective group. So it'll be the council, the mayor, and it's also a development group that was formed based on the study, and also some county representatives, too.
That's good to understand. Councilmember Rout?
Yes, thank you so much for the information. I do have one question. With the recommendations of this study, will that be sent over to the larger plan for the entire county? Or how are those recommendations going to be weighed in relation to the wider plan that is... Because I know that there's a lot of rezoning that's taking place.
Right, right.
So can you explain that process?
Well, what the study does is identify the best land uses in the area that they see feasible by the market study. What it's also going to do, they're going to look at, because of the proposed new zoning that's going to happen in the area, they're going to make recommendations for that. So it's kind of premature, try to answer that right now until the study's actually complete, but they are going to address that. Because that was, we know that was a concern of the town, that they're looking at those proposed zones. That, one of the zones they definitely don't want to agree with. So we're trying to look at, make sure that the uses that they recommend coincide with what the study actually says, based on whether it'll change or whether it will stay.
So the recommendations that will be made can play a very influential part in the rezoning for the town of Bladensburg?
Um, it will identify. It would identify, I would say that. Right now, I do know that the consultant actually interviewed the project manager of the County White Math Amendment. I do know that he kind of addressed why they wanted to rezone the zone that they actually proposed in that area, and I think it's CS. And I know that the town was looking at CN, which is on the other side. She's going to make a recommendation where they propose, and look at those uses. And also, just in case it may change, that if you put CN on the other side, what uses could go there? So that way, we're addressing both uses in both areas.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you, Councilmember Rout, for that question, and thank you for the response, Mr. White. And so really, once we get to the point where we've identified a developer for that project, or one has been developed, you know, identified, they would be responsible for complying with whatever zoning is in place at that time in terms of getting those appropriate permits from the county and submitting their plans and specs and everything, right?
And I think what we're trying to do is, you're looking at a vision that you see for that particular area. Right now, the vacancy rate is very low. It's a very active area. So now you have to talk to some of the property owners in that area. And if they want to see, okay, what is the future vision, you have a vision for them that they can strive for. Not necessarily saying that they have to do that, but at least you have some guidance of what the town would like to see. So when they come in their proposal, that you now respond to their proposal.
Yeah, that makes sense, being able to present what our vision and our plan is for the community and what we want to see.
Exactly. Because really, it reflects what was in the 2009 approved Portstown Plan, the recommendation there for the town of Bladensburg Character Area, which they recommend a pedestrian-friendly and an active service. Reason why we looked at the Bladensburg waterfront, so we know that's amenity. And we know, also know that since the town owns the Boswick House, which is a historic site, that you want to utilize that, those are amenities that can help get economic, economic down.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you all took the broader perspective on the project and took the initiative to walk down to the waterfront park and also look at Boswick, considering what we're trying to do with that property. So definitely appreciate that foresight. Are there any questions from staff for Mr. White? Okay, well, we thank you for coming in to give us the update, and we'll look forward to the broader meeting coming up in December. Might be good to just lock it in before too much time gets here, because basically, once October hits, it's New Year's, so.
And to break down, I should say, as far as the workshop, we don't know whether it's going to be a virtual workshop or... Well, we'll be working with you to see exactly what you want to do, if you want to hold it here. It is going to be a selective group and not going to be open to the general public, especially with COVID. So we have to really look at that. And we want to make sure that everybody's safe. And even when we were doing the walking tour, we wore masks, practiced social distancing, and we got it done. So we're going to move this thing forward. It's going to be a product that I hope you guys enjoy. So that's where we are right now. And if you need me to come back to update you on where she is and all like that, we can do that.
Great. Thank you again, Mr. White. We appreciate it. And please stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. And at this time, on the agenda, I'm going to apologize in advance because this is a little long. But as many of you know, last Thursday, we experienced some serious flooding in our community. And we weren't unique. We understand surrounding communities also experienced some major flooding. And so we wanted to address it because of the storm that took place. In a short span of time, we had a significant amount of rainfall, which led to flash flooding, not only in Bladensburg, but to many areas in the metro region. In addition, storm drains in different parts of the community became backed up with debris, which made it difficult for the rain to get through and go down the drains. In the short span of that storm, our public safety officers received 26 calls for rescue. 26. And we are not a huge police agency. So of course, our staff sprang into action, from our admin folks who are here, to the police department, public works, and code enforcement. And I'm thankful that you all were able to help every single person who called for assistance, including opening up the town hall for those who couldn't remain in their homes safely. And fortunately, we were able to get through that situation without any staff members or residents being harmed or losing their lives, and so I'm really grateful to that, for that. Even still, we recognize the need to assess the situation and work with the proper agencies to become better prepared for such events. As we all see, extreme weather is not unique anymore, and it's happening more regularly. And so this has also given us the opportunity to assess our resources and identify additional equipment needed for faster response. Staff has already began to reach out to WSSC in the county to set up the necessary meetings to address our concerns, and they'll keep us informed along the way. Members of our team will also be on the call tomorrow with the Prince George's County Department of Emergency Management to discuss our concerns with this event, along with other municipalities. And for any of my colleagues on the council, let me know if you didn't get that email. It just came out today, and I'll make sure I forward it to you all, because it's important for all of us to be on there. In addition to what I stated previously, Senator Malcolm Augustine came out on Friday during our grab-and-go event. He was going around the district assessing damage. And he offered some advice for our residents and indicated the best course of action for residents who've been impacted by the extreme weather is to file claims with your insurers as soon as possible, because there's a threshold of 200 residents needing assistance that has not been met yet, which I find strange considering how bad that storm is. But basically, that 200 resident threshold is what's needed before we can qualify for federal assistance. So with this in mind, I want to encourage all of our residents who experienced damage to their condos, their homes, or apartments last Thursday, please file your claims right away. And also, if you could email our staff, or myself, or your council member, and please let us know if you have filed a claim. That way collectively, we can keep a tally, because we want to share that with Senator Augustine's office, so he can get with the state emergency management department and make sure that we're pushing toward whatever, that federal threshold. Also, please keep in mind that even while we're trying to do this, this is not a fast process. Trying to get federal assistance, especially right now in the midst of a pandemic, it will take time. So in advance, I do ask for your patience. But again, whether your claim is accepted or denied, please let us know so we can track this information and be able to share that with Senator Augustine's office. And actually, just before this meeting started, there was another message that went out. And I want to share this hotline with you. This is for anyone who needs immediate assistance as a result of the storm, in need of housing, food, or financial support. Please call American Red Cross at 703-584-8400. But again, we did want to just make sure that we shared some information with residents, because some folks remarked they hadn't seen a storm in town that bad in 20 years. So we were very fortunate considering. So at this time, we will transition over to our interim town clerk, Ms. Town Clerk, merging, merging words, Mrs. Cecile Cunningham for the 58th Avenue update.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents. I think Vito and I are going to share this update. So as you know, the town recently put out an RFP to solicit bids for the 58th Avenue project. We did receive five companies to bid on the project. The lowest coming in at, let me have Vito's, 140?
Yeah, it's...
I'm sorry, 113. Lowest coming in at 113, 332. So right now, we are reviewing them, and we do have a recommendation from our town engineer on, as they've gone through the respective bids, and they provided some recommendation on which contractor to reach out to or award the project to. And we did also get some feedback from Sue Ellen. So I'll turn it over to Vito.
Yeah, as you can see with the bid tabulation here, we had five companies respond. And you can see, you know, we have bids that go from the 113,000. The 107, the first set numbers is the base bid, and the second set is the total bid. There's just some like specifications in there. But the base and total, tabulation is the same, you know. Lowest is lowest on base and total, second is second lowest on base and total, and so forth. So you see the bid range is anywhere from total bid, the right-hand column of 113,003,32, up over $200,000. We worked closely with the engineer and also our attorney, who has experience with these bids, to put this out, and we received them all Friday. Now, there are, we just got these in. The Reliable Contracting, I'm going to recommend to approve the contract, pending any final bid reviews, but it looks like everything's in order. There may be some additional funding, because I wonder if they honor, and if it's in the bid, which I think it is, all the lineums and quantities, if we can extend this out to other town projects or do the curbing and gutters for the same amount that we're budgeted through, through CDBG. We have to talk with them and the engineers as well. But that is, you know, the second part of it. But the first part is, you know, I want to bring this to the mayor and council the next meeting to recommend Reliable Contracting be awarded the 58th Avenue bid.
Yeah, reliable. Are they in the county?
They're in Millersville or Gambrels. They do a lot of work in that area. They are a, an older company, too. I mean, they've been around a while. No, uh-uh. But they do do, their references, they gave Prince George's County references for work done in Laurel, I think New Carrollton, for State Highway. There were local Prince George's County references, and the jobs were anywhere between 1.5 to 2.5 million dollars. And this job is...
175,000.
Is how much?
175,400.
Is the, is the budget amount of funds we're allowed to receive from CDBG.
Great. Any other questions from the council?
Went through an extensive process of the lineums, the quantities, and everything. Since it's fairly funded, you have to go through the Davis Bacon Wage Act, everything. So it was, if it was just us going out to do it, we could just put it out there, you know. But this was a 130-page, I think, or 100 and some page.
And the...
The document.
And the contractors who did receive the bid are contractors who have already been vetted through the county. If you recall, I think in the June meeting, we talked about shortening the bidding process, because we were behind the pro, you know, on the project. And so we only sent the RFP out for two weeks, and we sent it to contractors who were already vetted through the county. And that was provided through CPJ and Sue Ellen.
Yeah, I do recall that conversation, just to help ensure that we're dealing with, you know, people who've been properly vetted. So with that, is, oh, sorry, Councilmember Rout?
Hi, good evening. I wanted to know if any of the bids came from a woman or a minority-owned business? And if so, what was the offset in the cost between the five bids? Thank you.
I don't know that they're any women-owned, but they, they have to be registered as minority. They need that certification, I believe, with the county to do any type of work through CDBG grant. So they already have that certification.
Were any of the ones here, do you know Manuel Luis Construction, E&amp;R, American or VMP, minority-owned?
E&amp;R is, E&amp;R actually did our Spring Road project, right?
They did the first phase on 58th Avenue, too, and...
And Spring Road.
So just two of them?
We can double-check.
I'll double-check, but I want to say they're all, they all have that certification, but I'll double-check.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Great. At this time...
And also see where their office is, too. Concern brought up, you know, in county, out of county.
Gotcha. I think we have been fortunate, because this was delayed a little bit with the situation with distance learning happening, that we do have a little time. But I also recognize, we can't drag this out much longer, because then we'll be into cold weather and plants starting to shut down for the winter and so forth. So I do appreciate your help. I know it wasn't easy going through these 100-plus-page documents to drill everything down, but just want to open it up one more time for questions. Councilmember Lundie or Councilmember Blunt? All right. At this time, is there a motion to take the acting town administrator's recommendation to approve the bid?
We can wait till, let's wait till the...
Oh, sorry, that's right, financial business. Sorry, sorry, getting ahead of myself. I will put that aside. Okay. So next up, several members of the Bladensburg Complete Count Census Team are councilmembers. So just wanted to give an opportunity for the community to hear from them on some of the things that we've been doing to try and help get our numbers up. So at this time, Councilmember Lundie, Councilmember Rout, or Blunt, any updates you want to share with the community? I know we had the awesome event, August 30th, here, which was our drive-up. And this lady right here got crazy school donations from all, pretty much most of the sororities, probably in Prince George's County and Montgomery County. But any updates you'd like to share with the community at this time?
Good evening, town of Bladensburg. So I think that the Bladensburg Complete Census Count Committee has been working very hard on the town's behalf to try to raise the numbers of the census. A couple of the highlights is the Census Complete Count Team has been going out almost every Saturday for the last month or so, making sure that literature is reaching all of the low-county areas in town, which includes hanging flyers or door hangers on their doors, letting them know about the information. We had a successful event this past weekend where we had a ice cream truck social that went, it was at the Autumn Woods Apartment Community, where we actually enrolled individuals and their families in the census. We had a couple gift card giveaways. We had school supplies and resources. And so we, we are actually, using the chief of police terms, we're taking it to the streets. We're actually coming to the people and definitely trying to remind everyone to complete their census. In addition, we, the weekend before, we had a targeted back-to-school drive by which we had enrolled individuals in the census and also reminded them to register to vote. And once they completed those two items, they could sign, they could receive school supplies for children in pre-K, kindergarten, elementary age, middle school age, high school, and we even had college age. So I just want to thank some of the partners that have donated to this event to see a successful event, which includes the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity in Prince George's County, Sigma Gamma Roseroyty Incorporated, which includes the Eight Iota Sigma and Zeta Tau Sigma chapters, the Stephen Kates Camp, the Community of Hope Church, and that's about. And, and there are other residents in town that came and donated lots of supplies. There's like Crystal Williams in town who donated note cards. And we, other members in town and people that don't live in town, they were very, very gracious with their donations, and so we would like to thank them. In addition, the Census Complete Count Committee, they, we've been doing infomercials and videos, trying to remind members of our community through the use of social media to remind everyone to complete their census. And so we don't have that much time. So if the public can assist the Complete Census Count Team, that would be very helpful. And the only way you can do that is when you're in the grocery store, maybe standing in line or out in the community pumping gas. You could wave and smile and say, hey, did you complete your census? I mean, that small reminder can go a long way. So at this time, I don't have anything else to say.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilmember Lundie?
We also had assistance, I mean, the voter assistance, the voter campaign as well. And we did have one of our schoolkeepers, one of our Bladensburg schools, International High School, we hired to come out, and we had our youth to come out. So that was very successful. We also registered people to vote who hadn't done that yet. So that was a part of, also a part of our campaign as well. So like Councilmember Rout said, we have until September 30th is our deadline. So we need you all to fill out, complete your census questionnaire. It's very important. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Councilmember Blunt or Councilmember Mendoza, anything else on the census? Okay, so just to round it out, we have another event coming up this Saturday at Gateway Gardens. And so residents, we need you, if you've done the census, to bring your neighbors and have them completed. 10 minutes is all we need to get them counted. And for 10 minutes, when you think they're helping the county get $18,000, and about 1,500 of that coming back to the town, if we can get 50 to 100 people there, that would be amazing. Of course, it will take more, but we really need you all to be counted, because if nothing else, this pandemic has taught us that we need federal assistance. We are a small town. We're a small budget, or we have a small budget. We use our resources wisely, but when you're not counted, it has a direct impact on us. So for example, for the CARES Act that was passed by Congress over the summer, yes, we were grateful. We got $575,000, because it went to the county. And from there, they distributed that to the 27 municipalities in Prince George's County. But that $575 should have been a lot higher based on our population. So if there's 4,000 to 5,000 people who are not on that census roll, that's money that we never got. And we get so many requests from residents who are in need of assistance for housing, you know, back payments for rent, for food, for diapers, for wipes. There's so many needs that people have, but in order to help you, we need your help to be counted so we can get the resources to provide the necessary services for you. So again, please meet us this Saturday. You'll see posts about it throughout the week in the eBlast and on social media. But twelve to two P M. we'll be out at Gateway Gardens. And so with that, we will wrap up the census update and move into new business. Mrs. Cunningham?
All right, um, so in August, um, the mayor and council toured the Bosworth House. Um, that was a wonderful opportunity for them to, um, see this great property that, that's within, that's in the community. Um, as you may know, we have a Boswick, uh, committee that's been working, um, for a while, um, on pretty much soliciting and securing funding, um, to build out the property, um, and so it's, it's, it's ongoing. Um, I know when we had a tour in August and in previous meetings, when we had input from, uh, Mayor James, um, the conversation or the discussion was around, um, developing a stakeholder group, um, that would include residents, youth, um, local businesses. Invite them to the table so we can get a broader perspective on how we can, um, pursue funding and just, I, and just more recommendations, I would imagine, just around how the property can be used. Um, so that is where we are in the process right now. And so, um, we would just like to know from the mayor and council, um, just what organizations, um, are there, local residents? That you would like to be a part of that, um, committee, if there are, just for that information to me, so we can actually get that process started.
Perfect. And you know, I'm going to recommend Ms. Pat McCauley, because that, when she retired, she promised that she would still be willing to help.
Right, and she, she's.
But we will definitely do that. So do you want us to get you recommendations by the end of the week? Does that work?
That would help so much. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm, for the, um, stakeholder group.
Now, you know there's a Friends of Bosworth group there?
Is that, um, our friends, why am I, yeah. But I thought they were, uh, with Amen Trust, not.
Well, this is separate group, yeah, and some of the North and Shepherd, but they have a Friends of Bosworth group. They, they live in Bosworth. Too much of you guys, mm-hmm.
So this will actually be a separate, a separate committee, um, because what's, what's happened over the years is that a lot of people who are, who, who have been a part of this whole process, they've been a part of it for so long, that a lot of the ideas are starting to emerge and they, it's almost like you're not getting any fresh ideas. And so the whole purpose of creating this group is to, um, just, you know, cater to the, the community. We need young people at the table. We need to hear from them. A lot of them have never been to the Bosworth House. Um, and so we just want to open it to people who actually can, you know, have a stake in this community. Um, and that was a discussion a few months back.
Could they merge?
I don't need, I guess we could find out what, what exactly the role is of this other group, because it's odd to have that, but they're not tied to the town in any way, and it's a town asset.
No.
We can find out what that group is, um, but if it's any like, thing like some of the other groups that have been around for a while, they may or may not be willing to, but we can certainly reach out. And if not, we still have to keep moving forward.
Right.
So, um, if you want, I can try to get in touch with Pat, or if you want to, to see.
I'll, I'll get in touch with her.
Okay, to see, you know, where they are, what they've been up to. Because in terms of the funding, we're driving that, you know, we complete the applications for the grants. When it comes to the maintenance, we're the ones, our Public Works Department is maintaining it. So I'm really not clear on what the role of the other group has been, you know, over the years, so. Maybe.
Find out whether, so that way if they are and they still is, but because they've been silent, they might still have ideas, okay, moving on, opposed to just saying no. Just hear what they have to say first.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Lundie?
Yes. Was there a, a cap? Or how many people want to be a part of this, um, stakeholder group? Um, I honestly would say I would not go over fifteen, ten, fifteen.
Yeah.
Um, because you already have some key people at the table. We already have Sam, um, Parker, um, Amen Trust, Neighborhood Design Center. So those are the experts, if you will, at the table, um, along with some other folks who kind of make up the committee right now. Um, but we're really looking for residents and folks who, like I said, have a stake in this community and really can provide, help to provide some recommendations and just shape how, you know, the future of Boswick will look. So.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, but I think you're right. So if we keep that in mind, fifteen is our number. In terms of the technical experts, would you estimate there's what, five-ish of them roughly? Between Neighborhood Design Center, so really, we're looking at seven more people, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We can do that. Come together and do that. Awesome. Okay. And our next update, he's waiting in the wing, Officer Reinhardt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we did invite Morrison, Suburban San Commission to our meeting tonight. Um, unfortunately, they weren't able to attend, but, um, I'm ready and willing to give the update for them. Um, as you can look on the TV, uh, there are several locations in town that they're still doing water line replacement. Um, I did meet with WSSC this morning. Um, the only street they have left in town to do is Varnum Street, which is Steep Varnum. Um, that's the one with our large hill and the fifty-four hundred block. Um. If you also look where the little red dots are, that's where they have left to do main tie-ins, which will be, um, Emmiston Road, Annapolis Road. They do plan on being completed by November of twenty this year. Um, we think back, this construction started back in October of twenty eighteen. Um, once this is done, they get the new connections in, in Varnum Street done. They're going to come back and do a temporary milling of where they actually just put in the water main, and they're going to be back in the spring to do the complete milling and overlay of the project. That'll be from curb to curb. So as you can see on the map, that's going to be probably a good amount of our town that's going to get repaved with new roadways, um, to include Tilden Road from Emmiston all the way up to the high school. The next picture of the project, what I'm going to pull up real quick, is the extent of the work. It's basically what they're doing is replacing the actual water main and the water line up to the meter. Um, anything past a meter is the homeowner's responsibility. We haven't had any issues with the project. We have had a couple complaints about parking and trafficking, um, when they were starting to do the digging. Some residents concerned that they were cracking, some cracking of their walls and stuff like that. But they've, Morrison, WSSC's been contacted and been handling it as, as necessary. We still do have contacts with, uh, WSSC, uh, Mrs. Osanya and Mr. Wilkins are our project managers. I have their phone numbers. If the mayor and council would like, at any time, I'd be more willing to email them. Other than that, that's going to be our current update of the extent of work that the WSSC is having right now. Sir?
Sunday I was getting my hair cut at the fifty-fourth in Annapolis.
Mm-hmm.
When the, when the pipe busted, it was still killing the church. So I come up with a scene, seven minutes into just waiting for them, because they were like, putting me at home. I hung up and I called the police, you know, this friend said, look, there's one there. First thing they asked is, did you call WSSC? I'm like, no. Because WSSC is not responsive, I guess I moved there.
Uh, I, I think what it is, is there, and, and I'm not going to make excuses for WSSC or the police department or anything else. I just know, um, we do have contacts for WSSC if something does happen like that.
I'm sure they, they wouldn't bother you if you were.
Yeah, no, but, but don't hesitate. Call me. If, if you.
It was busted in the.
If it's busted and it's like that, don't hesitate to call me, um, because I do have the phone in my cell phone to, hey, we need somebody out to fix it. Most of the stuff over the weekend after hours does go through the WSSC emergency line. And usually they have a crew out within a matter of ten or fifteen minutes because it comes right from the Bladberg Girdle kind of worth the avenue. Um, I can't explain why the WSS dispatcher was giving you the runaround. Not even a, not even a apology. Put you on hold because.
Yeah, but I was like, I gotta.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Ralph?
Yeah, so there are, um, a couple of concerns that I had. And, uh, the first is, uh, there's been a few lame leaks, um, in Ward One. And specifically, there was one bad one where I had to reach out to Chief Collington after hours to get some support. So I would like the number, because residents, you know, as, you know, starting to grow, uh, they're like reaching out and sometimes I don't know what to say or do. So I'm happy that, um, I think in that situation, I did contact WSSC with that resident. We were unsuccessful as well. Um, secondly, there are roads in, um, the Ward One in particular that are affected by the large trucks that are coming up and down the roads that may not be on the map that you showed. So what is the plan for pilling and paving, what's it called?
A milling of paving. They're, they're only, yeah. They're only going to milling paper that they've actually done the construction work. Now, if we do see where one of their contractors' trucks have issued the roadway, we will definitely contact and reach out to the onsite supervisor and let them know that it is causing damage to our roadways and that needs to be addressed also.
Okay, there are a, a couple sites that I would like to speak with you about.
Sure.
Specifically on Spring and Fifty-Fifth around that loop deal.
Oh, Spring, you're talking about right there behind the Save-A-Lot area?
Yeah, right where it comes on Fifty-Fifth and it reaches Spring, there's a really bad, like, dip because they're doing road, they're doing work on Tossig right now.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's kind of bad. It looks a little bad, but it's because there are lots of snouts traffic. I mean, so it's not all WSSC though. There were big school buses that were, you know, going right there. So it's not, you know, just WSSC. I just think it's because of the wear and tear of the larger.
Yeah, and that's something that me and Mr. Hall could probably sit down with you. Spring and Fifty-Fifth?
Spring and Fifty-Fifth.
Is it on Spring Road or is it on Fifty-Fifth?
It's right there.
We, well, that is actually a feature of the roadway to, to get the water to channel down, because there are no storm drains there. So you talk for like concrete that's caved in, or there's another location that worked. Because Spring and Fifty-Fifth, I'm.
At the corner, Spring and Fifty-Fifth, in like the middle.
We'll take a look at it and see if we can figure out from that one.
Great. Uh, council or staff, any other questions? So I know we started this back in twenty eighteen, so do you think it's fair to say by late October, early November, they would have wrapped up the last few, you know, to close it out before the cold weather hit?
Yes, the project will be completed in November.
In November.
Um, they just won't be able to get back out because of the winter months to do the full milling and repaving. Now, I mean, they can do like temporary patching or some of the rougher spots, but the full repave will not have till spring of next year. And then they'll make notifications to the residents via sign, you know, we can also notify them through our message board and our eBlast that caving will happen. And once that starts to happen, I know everybody's going to be excited because we're going to basically be in brand new roads.
Exactly.
And about eighty percent of our roads in town, so.
And just as important, those water mains are being repaired, which is critical because, um, maybe five or six years ago, down here on Edmiston Road, I think just outside of town.
Yeah.
What, I remember one winter day, that family was pulling out of the driveway and the water main cracked and nearly swallowed their car. And we don't want anything like that happening in town with residence safety being jeopardized. I think they had a small child in that vehicle. It, it could have been really bad. So I'm grateful, even though it's a temporary inconvenience, the long-term prospect is totally worth it.
And speaking with them, they say some of our water mains are fifty, sixty, seventy years old at this point. So they're actually digging down and finding old abandoned wooden water mains. So you're talking, they're a hundred plus years old. I mean, they're still not new, but they're finding them as, during the process.
I like that. So Councilmember Blunt is all about vintage, so she wants some of that vintage wood from those hundred-year-olds. I'm sorry, Councilmember Mendoza.
Fifty-six place is not scheduled under this Tilden Road, uh, Water Main WMR project. Um, there will probably be something in the near future, but again, it's just not involved in the Tilden Road project.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the update. And sorry, WSSC couldn't join us tonight. Uh, so at this time, we'll turn it over to Mr. Tanelli.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we got a couple of meetings coming up. Um, I just want to get a, um, um, just, uh, who's going to attend. We have the Port Town's Quarterly Virtual Meeting that Comer Manor is, is holding. Is it Comer? I'm sorry, is it, um, College City? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, and that's on Twenty-third and is scheduled right now for, uh, six o'clock. And I'm not sure if everybody got invitation for that or not. If you have, just want to let, you want to respond and let them know. So, um, I think that they're still building the agenda. Um, also, MML is having a virtual fall conference on October the.
Eighth and Ninth.
Eighth and Ninth. And, um, is, is anyone registered yet or?
I have not received feedback.
Okay, so I guess, you know, we want to do registrations all at once, so I got everybody here, you know, who's interested.
I put my bid in.
What's that?
I put my bid in already.
Okay.
Yep, I did too. Okay.
Okay.
So hopefully that makes it easier.
And that's all I have, so I just wanted to get any, um, what's that?
We have another meeting. Um, TGCMA is meeting.
Oh, yes.
On the, um, seventeenth, seven P M. virtually, Prince George's County Municipal Association meeting.
What is that again? I'm sorry.
It's on the seventeenth of September.
Seventeenth.
At seven P M. is virtual.
Okay.
The members should have gotten, and, um, you know, you should have gotten to, you have not let me know.
Thank you for the reminder.
You're welcome.
And that's all, that's all we have for the meetings right now.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Tanelli. And at this time, we have come to the end of our work session agenda. We do need about fifteen to twenty.
No, public safety, public safety.
Oh. Oh, sorry. I just rode by you, chief, I'm sorry.
I think the mayor got something to do at home.
Trying to get to the council meeting. But a couple of, um, a couple of staff did ask about the June meetings. I'm not sure if you heard me at the beginning, but Councilmember Ralph did ask that they be tabled the approval of the June work session minutes until October. So, um, that was the reason I only went into the July.
Yeah.
Okay, over to you, chief. Sorry about that.
All right, no problem, no problem. Uh, I just want to circle back real quick about the, uh, thunderstorm we had the other day. You mentioned twenty-six calls for service. That twenty-six calls for service was just weather-related calls. So for that day, we had a total of seventy calls. So we got that twenty-six calls for service within an hour and a half of dealing with the storm. And I can't thank our staff enough, uh, for the hard work and, and stepping up. You know, it really challenged us as an agency. We called in extra dispatches, and we called in the night shift and a couple officers in. And everyone responded and came in. So I, that, that's, uh, a testament to the dedication that they have to this organization and to this community. And I can't thank them enough. And again, thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you to my colleagues, Sean and, um, Purnell. You know, Purnell was, he was off that day and he just popped right in and sprung right into action as he always do. So, um, I also want to talk about, when I first came here, we talked about, you know, making Bladensburg a highly sought-after agency to work for. And in doing so, we need to, we wanted to evolve with our training, with our technology, with our resources. And so I'm excited today to present to the, the mayor and council and the community, uh, two programs that we have entered into to help our officers be better trained, uh, better prepared, better educated, uh, and to make them more respected in doing their job. We talk about transparency and accountability. Uh, these two software, uh, programs that I'm going to discuss tonight, uh, would do just that. It has put us on a different platform in terms of increasing our, um, professionalism, our training, how we respond to calls. Uh, one is thepoliceone.com. And I'll, I'll be quick with this because there are numerous slides. What is the Police One Academy? It provides a secure, trusted and reliable online environment for the exchange of information between officers in the department across the United States and around the world. Chiefs officers informed and connected with updated training policies, situational awareness, officer safety, uh, videos, intuitive learning sessions that certifies them annually and, uh, annually according to the Maryland State Police Training Commission's yearly mandated requirements. So every year, officers have to, have to go through in-service. And with COVID nineteen, it's been challenging for police departments across the state to get the in-service hours in. So we, uh, started looking around and see what can assist us with certifying our officers with update, uh, case law. with update, uh, case law, with update training. Uh, so we know across the country, we saw a lot of videos of police-involved encounters that didn't turn out positive for, you know, the community or the people that they had the encounters with. We take these videos when they come in and we don't money more on the quarterback, but we learn best practices. What can we do if we were faced with certain circumstances similar? And how are we handling? So who uses PoliceOne? Uh, it's viewed, uh, two million visitors per month, over six hundred and fifty thousand registered members sign up for this. Just to qualify and validate this program, uh, it's recognized, number one, by the Maryland State Police Training Commission. When we vetted this, it's also recognized by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. So these practices and policies that, 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 um, people like PERF is the Professional Executive Research Forum out of Washington DC, they've all had a piece in putting this program together, PoliceOne. And it's also a part of, um, Lexipol, which is owned by Gordon Graham, uh, who was a longtime police officer attorney, attorney, uh, uh, subject expert matter, um, person. So you log into our home screen, we had the opportunity to design our, our page. So when anyone logged into it, they would see this mission statement that I created. Uh, it says, "Our mission is to enhance Bladensburg police personnel's ability to meet the needs of our community by providing twenty-first century policing that is recognized nationally as well as locally by the Maryland State Police Training Commission, which focuses on best standards, policies and practices. Additionally, our goal is to continue to strengthen our trust and legitimacy with our residents." And how do we build trust with our community? It's through the services that we provide, um, to the, to the community. So again, training is, uh, how we wanna enhance our ability to incre- and improve our services. So this training software goes across the department. Uh, our dispatchers, uh, our code enforcement, our public works, their leadership classes on there. As you can see, uh, this one is, um, uh, communication dispatch as well as, you know, COVID nineteen information. So when they log in, uh, our training coordinator, who I assigned, uh, PFC Thompson to be the department's training coordinator, he will post these, these, uh, classes. So each officer and staff will get a email that let them know that they have, uh, in-service training for them. They have a certain suspense date, it goes to the supervisors. They all log in, there's a test associated where you can't cheat the system. If you try to start a video or start a lecture and walk away, it'll time you out and lock you out. So you have to sit in front of it because every now and then it tells you have to move the mouse or they'll lock you out. So we know that they're getting, at the end, they have to take a test. So specify our training, again, we can put out what we want. Across the board, there's at every level of training for every member of our organization, including chiefs and administrators. So addition to that, now here's one, this was, uh, a class that was assigned to the staff. It says Silver Rights. So it tells them this is a four-hour block and they, um, they have to log in. They have to go through the videos as well as the lectures, not just videos, there's lectures there as well. They have to take notes because at the end, they're required to take a test. In order for them to pass this course, uh, they have to, the, the scale is set. They have to get a minimum of eighty to pass. So once they, and I've taken these classes because as the leader of the organization, I tell them that I wouldn't ask them to do anything I'm not willing to do. And as busy as I am, I still take the time to, to log in because I need to learn as well and keep training. So I took this cultural awareness test. It was a one-hour block and it tells me that I've earned a certificate because I completed the course. So it tells you, my score there was a, was a hundred, uh, passing the course because you have to take notes. One of these courses, I took forty-five pages of notes. So it, this is nothing to, you know, this is not that easy. But at the end, you will benefit from the information you learn. So this is what your certificate look out, uh, looks like. So you see this says course number and it has a P in front of it. What that P stands for is, it's a course that's recognized by the, uh, Police Training Commission. It goes towards your in-service hours. So now, no longer do we have to go to an outside source to get training that's not relevant to the town of Bladensburg. That's the beauty of this. We can select the courses now that's recognized through the Maryland Police Training Commission and get in-service. But when we wanna tell out our services to our community, we can go on here and pick. There are four hundred and eighty, uh, something courses in this software that we can pick. And they constantly update it, uh, every day. And that's the Silver Rights. So we go in, uh, as administrators, if you look up on the top where it says Lexipol PoliceOne Academy, you see the first three tabs the officers see. They can see the dashboard, but the admin tab is for certain members of the department. We can go in, we can reset the, the training, we can add training. I can upload videos that I, I want them to, uh, learn. Like I've uploaded the, uh, duty to intervene policy is on there. And it's seen by, by police agencies across the country because I got notified by a, a, a police agency in California that asked me about the duty to intervene policy and I sent it out there to them. So people are logging in and seeing what we're doing here in Bladensburg. So the second one I wanna talk about is, uh, the daily run sheets and enforcement time sheets. So we also partner with the police that, um, is for municipal police, uh, agencies. It's the RMS system for municipalities. So with this, you see all of these tabs here. Officers can do this right from their MDT in the car, their mobile data terminal in the car. So now we can track, uh, their enforcement, we can track their, what they, their productivity, their performance throughout the day. Uh, we can pull up, uh, the, the latest laws. If they pull traffic and they need to search what the, the charge, the correct charging document will be, there's a tab on here that they can, they can click on. It also tracks their time, their mileage, their, um, how much fuel they use, um, the starting and end time of their shift. So we have two things. We have allotted time, which is when, that's when they receive calls for service. And then unaccounted for time is the time that they just drive around the town. So now we can see exactly what they're doing. This helps out with our evaluations, uh, as well as when we move into our next phase of comstat, I'll be able to click and pull the data right from here and generate a report. So this is what, what it looks like when you log in. These are other law enforcement partners that are associated with it. And we just brought Bladensburg online with it. So if I wanna get an officer's monthly report, I can ask for the date. I can add, put the officer's ID number in and it'll tell me what they've done. It automatically populates the data into the report for me. And all I do is point and click and print it out. And I'll be able to report out what an officer does. Again, it helps with the, the, uh, to give officers fair evaluations. Like I said, when I came here, there's no more easy rides, no free rides. They have to earn it now. And I can see exactly what they're doing. Okay, this is a individual officer. So what we're doing now, we've selected certain officers to use this and I can see what, uh, Officer, uh, Harris did, uh, for the month of August. He had thirty-two calls that he handled and it breaks it down, each call that he, he was involved in. Again, so we talk about other resources. We know that Legit is the local government insurance trust that ensures the town of Bladensburg. We can go here and look up, uh, legal arguments, court cases. Um, we can find, it asks the question, is a traffic stop so inherently coercive that consent is given by an occupant to search his person will be deemed involuntary? So it will give you the answer. In addition to that, it will give you the whole case law. Now, we talk about community policing topics. Here's some other resources that officers can log into and learn. Talk about building trust, talk about community partnerships, hate crime resources. So now our officers now, instead of going off of what they heard or what somebody told them, they can now do research and understand what their job is to make them better out on the street, to provide better services to the community. Any questions? I know I kinda blew through that, but I can make this PowerPoint available to you if you want to.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chief, for that overview. I know you probably, because it's something you love, you could have went another thirty minutes. It's like Vito talking about the budget. But I would like to, um, open it up to the council and staff for questions or comments. Councilmember Mendoza? Nope, Councilmember Lundie?
So, um, so how do, so you can monitor how long they are in this, if they're even in it, using it?
Yes, where they log in every day, they have to.
Okay, I mean, I'm in the, uh, education piece.
Yes.
So have you set some kind of like goal for, what are you gonna be concerned about? See, I'm doing other stuff, but I'm not even trying to get educated about anything. Have you set any parameters around how often they go to those educational training tools?
So what we do is we assign them, uh, road call training.
Okay.
Every day.
Okay.
And then they'll take a larger block once a week.
Okay.
So no matter what. And then the sergeants get notified if they don't do it.
Okay.
I'll get a text that say, "Tat Collinson didn't log into the system." So the system, it kinda checks on the officers. So I can be doing whatever I'm doing, but I'll get an email to say, "The officer failed to log in." And it'll say they're late on the in-service. So now we're talking about holding supervisors accountable. Now we have our checks and balances to make sure that everyone's doing what they should be doing.
So, um, I, I really like this system. It seems to be very thorough, so I'm, I'm so glad that we're a part of this. And I assume that it's already paid for, it's in your budget?
Yes, so this system, now we talk about the training budget. Well, this system is twenty-nine hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
So, but it's endless training. When we used to spend eight, nine thousand dollars for training.
Yeah.
So now we can go through this and train our entire department, including our public works, our code enforcement, our dispatches, everybody benefits from this. The commanders, and we all get, again, we get certificates. So when I go through officers' folders, their personnel folders, when I got here, there was nothing there for the officers. So every officer wanna have a certificate in their folder. And I know Councilmember Mendoza is, uh, he, he can identify what recognizing officers for good work, for hard work, because he likes the, the ribbons and things like that. And that's the next goal that we're gonna do. And I told him before the end of the year, we will have a ribbon system, we, accommodation system. We recognize, we do bring them in and give them certificates. And officers do like to have a ribbon.
Builds morale.
Up on, exactly, you know. So this, again, holds officers accountable, it makes us trainable, it makes us, uh, more knowledgeable, just doing our job. And we talk about the legitimacy of the six pillars of twenty-first century policing. This is what we're talking about as we evolve and build a better police department.
Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you for those questions, Councilmember Lundie, Councilmember Blunt.
I have a software that's something that, that worked for my job, I have to do the same thing, so that's excellent.
Thank you.
That's, that is excellent.
Thank you.
Well, you always talk about the cost, but that is excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback, Councilmember Blunt, Councilmember Routh.
Yes, I do have a question. I can know on July thirteenth, um, the Mayor and Council voted Imagine Home and, and there are a number of training opportunities that was noted in that proposal. Um, does this system, um, mention anything about mental health first aid or anything that?
Yes, yes, it does. But, um, um, we haven't forgotten about Imagine.
I got asked.
No. Well, we, well, let me just say, uh, you know, we have been very short and the people that you're gonna see this evening, um, we had a, a total of nine vacancies to fill. Um, and we have successfully filled five of them. So we've been doing interviews and backgrounds, back to back. Uh, we just did some Thursday, I just picked somebody out the process today because as you see here, the history of the people that we are hiring, we're not just filling slots here. We're hiring the best qualified people to represent Bladensburg Police Department. So when you see the people that come here this evening, this is a testament of who we're building. Now, we'll say that our two dispatches who, uh, highly sought after the county want them back. Um, but they won't be here this evening because both of, one had a procedure and one had a pre-arranged engagement. Um, but I'll give some background when we get to that, uh, this evening.
So is mental health first aid included into, um, this system, the PoliceOne.com system?
Yes, yes it is. And, and I can give you, provide you.
No, I just wanted to know what are the recommended hours that are, um, nationally accredited?
So it's built out, we can pick the hours.
Okay.
So we, some of them are four-hour blocks, some of them are two-hour blocks, some of them are one-hour block. So we build them out and what the good thing about the system is they are working on it and then they get a call, they can log out and when they come back, they can pick up right where they are. So the system keeps track of, of the progress.
Oh, so it's not the nationally accredited mental health first aid that was recommended?
It, no, it's, it's not.
Okay.
It's not the nationally accredited, um, because I'm not sure which one was nationally accredited that you put in there.
I put it in, I, I.
Yeah, but we, yeah, we can talk about. But this is, this is recognized by, at the state level.
Okay.
And it's recognized by the Maryland Police Training Commission. So they wouldn't sign their name or I E C P, it's International Associate Chiefs of Police. So they all recognize this program.
Okay, and then, um, on the second, on the daily run sheets, how often are reports themed and analyzed? So let's say you see an uptick in robberies for, you know, the second week in every month as you're tracking. So with your data pool, when you're doing those data pools and you are doing your comstat reports, would that then be shared with the training coordinator? So that the training coordinator understands, oh, wow, we have this theme of domestic violence. So let's train everybody, is that how the data will be used?
Yes, so we, when we, we collect the data, we analyze the data, we come up with a, uh, plan of action to, to address the issue. And we discuss these in our supervisors' meeting. So we would, I would tell somebody that, you know, the sergeant, "Well, on night shift, you guys had an uptick in car break-ins." Sergeant, what are you doing? With, so the sergeant would have to tell me what are they doing? So now with this data, I can look and see between hours of, of ten and two, let's say, that's the hot spot.
Right.
So I need officers to saturate that area tonight or, or this, this week. So that's, that's the benefit of using the data to analyze it, to come up with a plan of action to get, you know, to make sure that we, we are covering the area during the time most likely will happen.
Well, it sounds like we're, we're leaning more towards making data-driven decisions, which I'm very, very proud of because that is something that, um, is, you know, twenty-first century just government. Um, and, you know, reactionary, not just based off of themes and what's going on in the community. It's actually using data to drive decisions, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Chief, um, last comment on this, but I wanna thank you for being patient with the Mayor and Council because when we hired you, even after you said you wanted the job, remember, we took you to lunch to make sure you understood what you were getting into. And the reason I say that is, yes, we have some great officers, but there was also a culture in this department that needed to be blown up. Not rebuilt, it needed to be blown up.
Yep.
And even as deputy chief, and you know, we had challenges where you were trying to move things ahead, but the leadership at the time would not get with it. We got through it. You could have very well left and took a different position, but you stayed because we had candid conversations about what was needed. The culture needed to be changed, accountability needed to be changed. And I, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate it because, yes, it took a year and a half, but we're getting there. You know, the pandemic slowed us down, but we're still getting there. And that's why I have a hundred percent confidence in you and your experience because everything you said you were going to do, you did it. And even in a situation where we didn't have the system, you still were able to deploy the officers to parts of towns to deal, of the town to deal with specific issues because you had that familiarity with how to use data. We didn't have the, the fancy tool that this is, but because of your prior training, you were able to do that and thus make the community safer. So now I'm excited because we're at that point where you're getting the technology in here, you're getting the officers trained. I don't know if you all understand, when I say this system needed to be blown up to a degree, we had a prior chief who actually refused to train our officers because he believed if you trained them, they would leave. And we, we talked about this and how we're blowing that, that mentality up. We will not lose another good officer because we refuse to train them. We will do everything in our power to give our officers every opportunity to be well-educated, well-trained, the top-notch community police. When you say this will be an agency that is after, it's already happening. There's people who wanna come here, there's people who wanna come back because they see what you're doing. So again, I wanna thank you because I know, as a twenty-plus-year resident of this town, I've seen it. And so much progress has happened over. I've seen it, and so much progress has happened over this year and a half, and I cannot thank you enough. So thank you for taking the time to invest in this. I know it'll be a learning process as staff get accustomed to utilizing it. I look forward to how it even benefits Code and Public Works. I think, again, you're moving us in the right direction. I had nothing but faith in you, this council, this, your peers. I mean, we know that you love this town and you're giving two hundred percent to this job, and we, for that, we can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank the mayor and council and the community and my colleagues for being patient with me while we pulled all this together.
Councilmember Blunt says she has a ribbon for him. And actually, you brought the ribbon idea up again, this was another challenge we had previously, we couldn't even get the ribbon program going. But again, it's a new day. By the end of this year, we will have ribbons. So thank you so much, Chief. Yes, Councilmember Mendoza?
I even have it at home. But back in 2006, I signed the ribbon program, and every chief just.
Really?
Put it in the background.
Chief, can you touch on that real quick, what the ribbon program is?
Well, I'll tell you, we already have a draft put together. So what the ribbon program is, so officer of the year, supervisor of the year, employee of the year, chiefs awards, things like that for doing, like, we just recovered a bunch of guns. So those officers should be recognized for going above and beyond, putting themselves in harm's way, just like we, we did for the storm. Those officers should be recognized for the hard work. We want them to continue to work, we have to invest in them. We have to let them know they are appreciated for what they do. So that's what we're going to do with the ribbon program.
Absolutely. Thank you again, Chief. And with that, if there are any other comments or questions, because we do have to move forward with the agenda. At this time, I will ask for a motion to go into closed session. We do have a personnel matter we need to discuss. I think it'll be quick, so maybe ten minutes instead of twenty as indicated here, but is there a motion?
I don't know.
Moved by Councilmember Routh? Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt, all in favor? Let it be known by the saying of aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it, thank you so much. So we'll go into closed session for about ten minutes and then be back at seven for the council meeting. Thank you.